... The patients suggest to see how it just makes them up in the afternoon. It really makes a good call.
That's great.
Allison, we meet on the second and fourth Monday.
And go ahead, sir. Serve the pot. No, I'm good right now. I have a meeting to run. Thank you.
I'll take a break.
If you want to serve them. You know what I'm going to ask? If we could just push it over to the side because I'm going to go into public comment. So at this point, we're going to enter a public comment. Thank you very much, Allison. Thank you, Mary, and to the hospital staff and administration that's here tonight. Wonderful job. We'll enter into public comment. At this time, anybody from the public that would like to speak, you have a five-minute limit, speak on any subject at all, please come to the podium, just state your name and the ward that you live in, please.
That's okay.
Just pretend it's not there, that's all.
My name is Robin Tamperino. I live in the fourth ward. And I'm probably one of the most annoying people to the mayor as every time we flood his family, I already brought up, I am always sending him a message. I've been in the house for almost forty-one years. I cannot tell you how many floods I've endured and how much damage we have, we've had to endure in the house. We're just redoing the porch because of all the flooding that the house is sinking. I'm not sure where you guys can go with this, but something has to be done. People ride through it when it's flooded. They cause these huge waves to come through that flood into everybody's basins, even worse. I, when I text you or when I send you a message, it's because we want the streets blocked off. If we block them off, we're going to get what for from everybody else. But we need that immediately when it starts to flood, the streets have to be blocked. We can't have people running, you know, driving back and forth through them just to see them create a wave. It was last flood we had last week. Somebody came through so fast they hit the front door. This is really not acceptable. I don't know what you guys can do, but something seriously has to be done to prevent this from continuing. It's got to be done.
Okay. So a couple of things. First of all, normally I come down to see you, but I apologize because I was away, but we did communicate. So one of the, one of the questions that the general public may just ask is, you know, they think, when you think sewer, because like even you thought sewer is all one, sewer is our waste, wastewater from our houses. This is storm water, which is a completely different line. And a lot of times, the state looks at storm water as like it's not an issue when we, when we look at grants. So something that we have to look at as a council is, is this a project? Because in speaking with, with Jack, they've, they've looked through your pipes, they're clear. It's just that it's a capacity problem and that you sit at that lower level. And it's, and it's of course only when you get the heavy, heavy, quick downpours is when it floods. One of the things that Valerie looked at is there is a $200 million grant for culverts and trenches. We don't know if, if this would fall under that because we would have to go into an engineering phase and then it would obviously be part, we don't know if there's any matches or anything like that at this point, but, but that we would have to go through the engineering phase and we would have to go through, you know, digging it up and replacing the pipe. But Jack is going to put out to our engineers, because I came back today, Jack's going to put it out to our engineers if we would qualify for this grant for this, okay? Obviously because of our money situation, we got to look in that direction first, all right? And you rarely see these, the culverts and trenches, and that's why it says that culverts and trenches, it doesn't say storm water, but we're hoping that it, it's part of that idea, okay? So that's where we're at right now. But something that we can work on and that you mentioned is, you know, is a notification rather than to me, maybe to the police department when the, when the water really starts backing up and the possibility of if, if they're available, the police department, a police department calling out DPW to put barricades up or blocking the road.
So we should call the police department.
During the time, yeah.
The reason the sewage comes up is I know that everybody always says it's two separate things, but I will tell you that when we've had severe floods, what's floating in the basement is not from a storm. It's coming from sewage and it smells.
Okay, so, so what you're, are you getting a backup into your house?
Into the basement.
You're, you're getting a backup from your sewer water?
Only when the street remains flooded for a length of time with these quick sudden downpours, we could have a sudden downpour in five minutes and it, it floods the street, but it doesn't back up into the basement until it's been sitting there for a length of time. Usually, most of them will dissipate. But we can get the water coming in through the cellar windows and everything from guys going through with their trucks and everything and creating waves. But Robin's right, when you had, had times where after, especially in summertime, that it would smell like sewage coming from the drain.
Well, you know what? Maybe I'll ask Mr. Fard to stop down to see you, just because the two are supposed to be completely separate, right? And if there's a situation, we need to, we need to find out what that is.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Perfect point.
That's you, Ed.
That's me. Okay, first I got to say I'm not represented by a lawyer, so I can get questions answered. Is that correct, Mr. Berbozzo?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a disc with motorcycle repair on the eighteenth. You can watch that video. And what's really a shame is I started all this because of a parking problem on my street. I got a ticket. The truck that was parked in the same spot for a month didn't get a ticket. I got a ticket. The chief took care of the ticket. I just goes to show you.
When was the date of that ticket?
I got a ticket. Have it. Thank you. Next is Mr., uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rivera. I have several, I mean, when I say several, I mean like five foil requests from Mr. Rivera. And every answer that I got from him says no violations, let's see, thirty-two Farm Street, there are no violations in our files on this. The next one says, uh, let's see, no agreements, complaints, or violations from four eleven to five three. And I got a letter from Mrs. Rutan, April twenty-ninth. Is that between four eleven and five three? Okay. There's no agreements. He said he had a letter, and he said he didn't have a letter. Then when I insisted on getting the letter, he finally gave me the letter. Next, let's see. Just more violations. There is none, I mean. And then he issues a building permit. I requested foil for a building permit. He issues a building permit for a place that has motorcycles, gas cans, and he refused to go there and refused to take the, the fire inspector there. And he said in the council meeting that he was going to take them the next morning. Is that correct, Mr. Berbozzo?
I don't recall.
Okay.
What's a building permit for?
A building permit is for electric, smoke detectors.
And what does it say as the owner of the establishment says that? Oh, it's her daddy Rutan.
Yeah. She's the owner of the building.
And she's dead, deceased.
Well, it's her, it's her daughter. But he issued a building permit for a smoke detector in the basement of a building with a bunch of motorcycles and there's no sheet rock protection from the, from the basement to the house where the people are living. It's bullshit. And I said to him, there's tires up there. They changed tires over the weekend. You know what he said to me? He said, you've got construction to bring to your yard. Is that, is that what you said? You can answer my question now.
Can I answer this?
Yes.
Can I answer it fully?
Yeah.
I can.
Sure.
Number one, it was explained to you already that they didn't need any permits for any of the stuff that they don't need. It's been a single family since nineteen sixty-five with a garage in the first ward.
It's not a garage, sir. It's not a garage.
It's a garage in the first ward. It's capital space on the second. It's been assessed that way since nineteen sixty-five.
What was the letter for? She's going to take care of the violations.
There's no violations.
What's the letter for that she came to your office? You said she came to your office inside. What's the letter for?
There's no violations, sir. She's not, she's not violation of anything.
It doesn't say violations, it says to comply with building codes, current building codes.
She wants to bring the building.
She wants to build, bring, bring her building.
Exactly. So there's gas cans, motorcycles, motorcycle repair in the basement. Does she have to bring it up to repair? Does she have to?
Does she, does she have to?
Does she have to? Yes or no?
It's been that way since, since.
Since sixty-five.
So she's going to bring it up to satisfaction, but she don't have to.
She chooses to.
She chooses to.
Correct.
There's something wrong with this picture. I took him.
Department of State and talk to the people up in New York State and explain to you the same thing.
Anyway, let's go back to the tires. He's changing tires up there. Is that legal?
He's changing tires on his own equipment.
No, he's not. All the motorcycles he brings in here has got license plates on them and they're not his license plates.
I have no proof of that.
You told me if I gave you a business card that he's doing business up there, that you would do something about it, and you did nothing.
I'll get a court of law right now. I would ask for that.
I'm sorry.
All right. All right, all right. I'll end that one, okay?
But I told him about the tires and he says you've got construction to bring to your yard. So I cleaned up my construction debris like that. Tires are still there. When you watch that video, you watch that man go out there and hang, well, I didn't get it from the beginning, but he's got a gas can hanging on a tuba floor up in the air with the gas tank off the bike in the garage, or excuse me, in the basement, working on that motorcycle outside. And that's the second time in three days they did that with a different motorcycle. Both motorcycles have license plates on it and they're not his. I should take a picture of the license plates.
Mr. DeGroot.
Yes.
The five minutes is up, so I have to ask you if you come back at the end of public comment, you can speak for the notice right now.
Okay.
All right. Is it three minutes or five minutes? Three minutes at the end. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Not hearing any. I'll ask for council approval.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that's right. Go ahead. Chief, sorry about that.
Good evening. I just wanted to discuss the upcoming National Night Out Against Crime celebration that's scheduled for Tuesday, August second, at downtown Beautiful Riverside Park at 6:00 PM. This is our tenth annual event. And this year's event, we're expecting over sixty different organizations to attend. Several law enforcement, law enforcement organizations as well will be in attendance. We'll have a variety of activities that are family, friendly oriented to basically promote police community unity through the various law enforcement agencies that are there and also our partners that serve in the field in the various health and human services organizations. One of our major sponsors here tonight, Bonse Corr Community Hospital. This is a donation generated event that many businesses partake in, individuals, in order for us to provide it free to the public. Our local Elks will be cooking hot dogs. Employees from Colmar will be man in the kitchen and serving those hot dogs as well as water. And there'll be freeze pops there that the fourth ward neighborhood watch will be serving. So truly, it's a collaborative event. Please, I encourage you to come out. We have a unity parade that lines up at 5:00 PM in front of City Hall. And we invite members of the council, department heads, to please march alongside neighborhood watch members, our DARE students, our youth, and our law enforcement officers throughout the streets, led by the Broom Street Band, as we kick off the event. So the parade lineup's at 5:00 and the parade begins probably at 5:30 PM in front of City Hall. So please come out and support our efforts to promote a positive Port Jervis, to promote enhanced community relations, and overall, the theme of pride and respect of our community. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody wants?
Help yourself.
Help yourself. I'm on the hang too.
Okay, moving to approval of minutes. I have a motion to approve the July eleventh minutes.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Berbozzo, second by Mr. Belcher. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. Committee reports, finance and insurance, Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor. The finance committee met on July twentieth. Beginning of the meeting, we had the Bonadilla and Company went over to 2015, which was a rough trip, awarded with the members of the committee. Didn't really see any significant issues. We did make two suggestions, we actually made four suggestions, two already been taken care of. One was regarding the CDA and the suggestion included monthly reconciliation of loan receivables at the end of each month. And then for the city, the budget should be monitored, it's spending throughout the year, which I believe we do. I think the only issue is unexpected expenses that come up during the year that we don't anticipate. But overall, I, the report was good and he's going to go back and give us a final report.
I think the one issue, because I wasn't at the meeting, but I read it, was, was forty-six, forty-eight, that we didn't consider expense in 2015 that we had to, we had to make up.
And after that, we went over the second quarter budget review and clerk, Quasenega, reported there's no, any lines that are in the budget right now that are really out of whack, so we continue to monitor that. Also, overall, revenue is running at fifty-one percent of budgeted levels and expenditures are at forty-nine percent of budgeted level. While cash flow management remained problematic at certain times during the year, did not worsen from last year. Also, the upcoming year still remains a challenge and once again, we require careful planning and budgeting to avoid further deterioration of our finances. Next scheduled meeting will be August seventeenth at 6:30 PM up in the council chambers. And that's all I have for finance.
Thank you, sir. Fire emergency management, Mr. Siegel.
Hold on one second, I'm sorry. Never mind. I read so much, I forgot about the bills.
Oh, it's set up paying.
Are they the ones that just signed?
Maybe fire emergency management.
Yeah, we'll pay it.
The city has bills to pay. And our general fund is three hundred twenty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and eighty cents. And our water fund is forty-three thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars and four cents. Capital fund is a hundred twenty-three thousand nine hundred twelve dollars and nineteen cents for a grand total of four hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and three cents. In the general and water fund, some of the significant expenses were employee health insurance for June coverage, is a hundred fifty-seven thousand two hundred ninety dollars and seven cents. Orange and Rockland June utilities, twenty-three thousand two hundred seventy-one dollars and ninety cents. Orange County landfill, the June usage, seventeen thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-five cents. In the capital fund, W M Coles Construction is the clarification upgrade project, thirty-five thousand eight hundred twenty dollars. Pro River Plumbing, water clarification project, thirty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and seventeen cents. Can I make a motion to pay the bills at this time?
Motion by Mr. Ritchie, second. Second by Mr. Berbozzo. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
And one last thing. Our assessors office sent me a memo. We need to approve certificate adjusted base proportions. And for the 2015 to 2016, the percentage for homestead is zero point nine 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 seven five and for non-homestead is one point zero five seven zero nine. Can I make a motion to approve those appropriations?
Second. Motion by Mr. Berbozzo, or excuse me, by Mr. Ritchie, second by Mr. Belcher. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Now I'm finished. Thank you.
Fire emergency management, Mr. Siegel.
Thank you, Mayor. Start with the department secretary correspondence. I have an email letter here for some business that was transacted between our last meeting and this meeting that already took place, but we need to bring it up for the record. At tonight's board officers meeting, the following requests were approved. One, Excelsior Engine Company number five to attend a steak bake in Liberty on Friday, seven fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, and use the department bus and if necessary, the department utility vehicle to transport its members. Two, Delrin Engine Company number two to attend a fundraiser at the Milford Chrysler on seven sixteen, two thousand and sixteen, from twelve PM until six PM, and bring with them the department apparatus. Please note that the local Pennsylvania organization's declined to attend. You're being notified of these events at the request of Chief Sicilis as the next scheduled meeting of the city council is not until seven twenty-five, two thousand and sixteen. Thank you, Bill, and I make a motion, we approve those afterwards.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Ritchie. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
We have a nomination for active membership. Actually, we have two, so I'll combine them and read the companies. Nomination for active membership of Gregory Colette and membership of Raymond J. Vandever R. Dear Mayor Decker, members of the city council, it's hereby requested that below named person be approved for active membership into the Port Jervis Fire Department and the company stated Gregory A. Colette, Neversteng Energy Company number one, and Brian J. Vandever, Tri-State Most Company number six. The members of the board of officers of the Port Jervis Fire Department approved these applications on seven eleven, two thousand and sixteen, and by the prospective member's company on the date stated on the individual's application. Respectfully submitted, William Warner. Make motion, we approve both bills.
And a motion by Mr. Siegel for membership, a motion by Mr. Siegel, a second by Mr. Berbozzo for the membership. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. Appointment of probationary driver. Dear Mayor Decker, members of the city council, it's hereby requested that the below named firefighter be approved as a member of the water operations team. James B. Fuller, senior, Delrin Engine Company number two. He previously served on the team and has met the minimum requirements for membership. This, this request was approved by the board of officers on seven eleven, two thousand and sixteen. Respectfully submitted, William R. Warner. Make motion, accept that.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Siegel, or, the motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Foster for probationary driver, Mr. Fuller. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. And I have several removal of members, but I'm doing them digitally because they're for different reasons, different companies. Removal of member, Amanda Artis, dear Mayor Decker, members of the city council. This is the request that the below named, a member of Port Jervis Fire Department company here in state, be removed from the active membership roles for the reasons stated. Amanda Artis, Neversteng Energy Company number one, expelled due to non-compliance of bylaws in relation to assessments. This change is effective to state, respectfully submitted, William Warner. Make motion, accept that.
Second.
And a motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Belcher. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. Next one is Matthew S. Delue, Delrin Engine Company number two, expelled due to Article seven, section one of the bylaws for failure to fulfill duties as a member and Article five, section four, non-payment of dues. This change is also effective to state, respectfully submitted, William Warner. Make motion, accept that.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Berbozzo. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
The next one is, this is the request that the below named, a member of Port Jervis Fire Department company here in state, to be removed from the active membership roles for the reasons stated. Joseph Malvinato, junior, Delrin Engine Company number two, expelled due to failure of duties as a member, section seven, I'm sorry, Article seven, section one of the company bylaws and non-payment of dues, Article five, section four. This change is effective to state, William Warner. Make motion, accept that.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Berbozzo. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. The next one is Kevin McConnell, Delrin Engine Company number two, expelled due to failure to fulfill his members, his duties as a member of Article seven, section one of the company bylaws and non-payment of dues, Article five, section four. This change is effective to state, respectfully submitted, William Warner. Make motion, accept that.
Second.
And a second, a motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Berbozzo. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. And the last one is Michael K. Winters, Delrin Engine Company number two, expelled due to failure to fulfill duties as a member of Article seven, section one of the company bylaws and non-payment of dues, Article five, section four. This change is effective immediately, William R. Warner. Make motion, accept that one as well.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Ritchie. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. That being all said, if there's anybody out there who'd like an application, Port Jervis Fire Department, we have them and we're looking for members. Next is the moveover law revision. There's a moveover law that requires drivers to slow down and move over a lane when approaching a vehicle with a flashing blue or green light that are operated by volunteer firefighters or ambulance workers involved in an emergency. Previously, the moveover law only applied to drivers approaching stopped police, emergency and hazard vehicles with flashing red or white or amber lights. So now, if you see a blue light or a green light, you have to move over just as if it was a police officer. And that was established by the state to protect those that are responding to emergency situations and while they're at the scene. Also, as we just spoke about, looking for new members, all the captains and firefighters that give out applications to prospective members, need to know that there's a new application. There seems to be some confusion in the application process and this application is, is much more in-depth than the old one. So please review the procedure so that non-compliance does not lengthen the process. Again, watch our Facebook page, Port Jervis Fire Department, and our webpage, PJNYFD.com for additional information about the Port Jervis Fire Department. And the next board of officers meeting is August first at the firing museum. The July meeting of the Fire Emergencies Management Committee was canceled due to a lack of reform again, reform again, I'm sorry. The next fire emergency management meeting is scheduled for Monday, August fifteenth at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Code and legislative, Mr. Berbozzo.
Thank you, Mayor. The local law that was presented this evening and that the public hearing was held for, actually cannot be voted on this evening because it's still in two thirty-nine review and we are awaiting comment from the county. However, we do have two resolutions that can be adopted in relationship to this local law, the under seeker, due to the fact that it's a change to our zoning code. So the first one, be it hereby resolved that the common council of the city of Port Jervis, Orange County, New York, does pursuant to the provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, designate itself as lead agency for the purposes of seeker review of local law number fifteen of two thousand and sixteen, being entitled, "A Local Law Amending Section 535-47 of Chapter 535, Article 11, Changing the Off-Street Parking Requirements for Restaurant Uses from One Parking Space Per 150 Square Feet of Floor Area to One Parking Space Per 150 Square Feet of Occupant Load Area." I make that a motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Berbozzo, second by Mr. Belcher, and this is for a resolution for lead agency for local law number fifteen. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And the second resolution, be it hereby resolved that the common council of the city city of Port Jervis, Orange County, New York does pursuant to the provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act and pursuant to the advice of Corporation Council of Port Jervis, determine that there is no evidence that significant environmental impacts will result from the approval of said local law. Accordingly, the common council of the city of Port Jervis, Orange County, New York does adopt a negative declaration pursuant to seeker. Can I make that a motion as well?
A motion by Mr. Bobozo on the resolution, no significant environmental impact, second by Mr. Belcher. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
The code committee has not met since our last council meeting. It will meet again next week, August 3rd at 7 o'clock here in the council chambers. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.